And we are five. Yes, we are. Go ahead.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Almarle County Planning Commission. I'll first read the public can access and participate in the meeting through information posted on the Almarle County website, specifically on the Planning Commission homepage and the Almarle County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment on specific items where input is invited. We'll begin by establishing a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Carazana?
Here.
Mr. Missile?
Here.
Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you.
Full house. Thank you. We will now move on to the public comment on matters pending before the commission but not listed for a public hearing on this current agenda. Are there any, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak to items that are not listed on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to number four, the consent agenda, and ask if you, if anybody would like to pull any of these or if there'd be a motion to approve the minutes from March 2025, or sorry, 25th, 2025 and April 8th, 2025.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, second, any discussion? All right, may we have the roll, please?
All right. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And with that, we will move into the public hearing section and begin with our only public hearing item to this evening. SP 2024 dash 26 Woolen Mills Light Industrial Park, and I'll ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Missile. Rebecca Ragsdale, Planning Manager with the Planning Division, and I'll be taking you through staff's presentation of this request, which is referred to as Woolen Mills Industrial, and the request is specific to fill in the floodplain. We're gonna, I'm gonna take you through some of the site context and the specifics of the regulatory framework, if you will, the comprehensive plan, and then the specifics of the request and recommendation. This particular site is located in what's referred to as the Woolen Mills. It is along Franklin Street. It's outlined in yellow. The city is to the north and the west, and it is along Morris Creek, near the Woolen Mills neighborhood in the county, adjacent to 64. And we'll show you some more specifics of the site, but it is on the edge there of the city. This is an outline again in yellow. Each of the maps, the site will be outlined in yellow of the site along Franklin. It's a 7.8 acres property, and the request is to fill in the floodplain 1.496 acres, which is located adjacent to Franklin Street. That 1.496 acres would be similar to the property beside it, the bakery that was approved back in 1997 for fill in the floodplain. It is an area of the county that has industrial uses and a lot of industrial zoning. This site in particular is owned by the same owner that is, that is adjacent and developing this industrial area that is referred to as the Woolen Mills Industrial Park. So 1.496 of it would be developed potentially if the flood, floodplain request is approved, and the remainder of it, about 5.58 acres, would remain outside of that developable area and be intact as far as remaining floodplain. Other uses, we mentioned the residential in the city with the manufactured home community. Other uses, we mentioned the residential in the city with the manufactured home community, adjacent properties, other adjacent properties are owned by the Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority and are either used for the treatment plant or facilities, or there is a wetlands parcel just budding this one to the south. Southwest. This is just another view of the site that shows you the proximity of of the wetlands area and then the industrial, another more recent shot is why that was provided in terms of the industrial area that's developing. The site is primarily wooded. There are some areas of the site with this being an adjacent and included in some ways with some of the owners, other, other properties. There is a stormwater management facility that's located adjacent to Morris Creek Lane, and that's here on that portion of the floodplain property. In terms of the site context, we, if you've been out to the site, you can see the, there is in the industrial nature along Franklin, but also the residential that we mentioned before. The particulars of the request, we mentioned, orienting you again to Franklin Street, Morris Creek Lane. This is the bakery. The, the boundary or the, the parcel is highlighted in the light green color and what we wanted to flag for you. Since this is a request that's focused on the special use permit for a use in the floodplain, we wanted to make sure that you had that information about the site as far as what is proposed. Outside of the floodway, yellow, potentially a retaining wall, and then the one point four nine six area roughly outlined in yellow. The extent of the floodplain is in the turquoise line. This is indicating the area that they indicated on their plans would remain for either existing tree canopy to be preserved or required replantings. And as part of their application, they did offer an area for, potentially for dedication to the county. This is the zoning map. We mentioned the industrial nature of the parcels over here to the northeast. That, this is an area of the county that does have a great deal or is a concentration of industrial zoning. Over here with the commercial zoning is the Woolen Mills where Willow Tree, formerly Willow Tree, is located, and then the pedestrian bridge over to the trail on the other side of Morris Creek. There's a little bit of rural area that was rezoned in recent history. This is, I mentioned this request is specific to the floodplain. This is a map of the floodplain in blue with the, with the striping, and then the purple is the stream buffer. This is Morris Creek again and Franklin Street. And then this request here is the one that was approved, going back to nineteen ninety seven to allow fill in the floodplain. We don't, we do, we don't see fill in the floodplain requests as standalone requests that often. They're usually accompany another zoning action, as in the case over here, when that was before the commission with Woolen Mills in terms of what was necessary under the flood hazard overlay district there. We do see it sometimes in these locations in the development area. We don't have an example exactly like this one, except in recent history, except for the SP that was approved back in ninety seven. And again, you know, this is, the underlying zoning is light industrial. The purpose is to potentially allow that one point four nine six area to be filled and then allow for future industrial uses. We've gotten some questions about, you know, the nature of this request and why we don't have a use right now in terms of a future industrial use. So I wanted to spend some time this evening going over those industrial uses. This is sort of generally, very generally, doesn't include everything, the steps in the process in terms of this request having come in initially as a floodplain development permit that was reviewed by engineering, which immediately identified the need for a special use permit. Of course FEMA would be involved with any letters of map provision if this were approved, but then there would be special use permit conditions, and then eventually a site plan if they do propose industrial uses, and then all of our other steps in the process. We'll talk a little bit more about those that are unique to industrial uses. This particular area, because of the floodplain and because of our recommendations in the comprehensive plan for protecting those areas, is designated with the Parks and Green Systems category that you've seen in some of our master plans. With that wording, or perhaps slight variations of it, we may use the term green space, but the objective being to retain and improve land cover as it relates to stream corridors and protect the floodplain as part of the county's regulations to manage the floodplain in terms of the benefits that it provides, not only for protection from flooding events, but also environmentally. So not only is there the general green space designation, but the reason behind it being all of our other strategies in the comprehensive plan for riparian areas. All right, I think I went too far. So switching gears to the specific request before you, it is a special use permit, and it is specific to the fill request in the flood hazard overlay district. One of the zoning districts applicable to this, to this request, and we wanted to make, make sure that we went over the SP criteria as we always do and what we've considered in terms of detriment to abutting properties. There is the criteria in the flood, flood hazard overlay district, and this is the criteria that is applicable to all comprehen, excuse me, all special use permit requests, including the comprehensive plan that we mentioned, and the inconsistency in terms of the industrial use not being consistent with that. Some of the feedback we've gotten, I want to mention, you've seen a number of emails on this request, and part of our evaluation considers the public comments. We know that the community meeting for this item happened a little too closely to the public hearing, but there were some other issues with scheduling and getting it to a CAC. So we prefer not to have it so close to Planning Commission meeting, but the community meeting was held, and there were about five residents that spoke and the theme of the concerns that we've heard from residents that attended the community meeting, and also the emails have been a concern about the impacts to Morris Creek, the Ravanna River, and, and reiterating those goals that we have for floodplain areas and their benefits, and making sure we look at any cumulative changes to the floodplain. So those, you've received the emails. They do overarching, were outlining concerns and in opposition in some cases to this request, and I believe there was one that was in support. We have received, we had continued to receive those up until this meeting. So switching gears back to the overlay district regulations and the special use permit request. We use the terminology in the flood hazard overlay district of the floodplain as a general term, and there are distinctions made in terms of regulations in our ordinance, and this request is, is in the limited to the floodway fringe. And then the floodway is more restrictive, and that this will not impact the floodway and is not allowed to, to do that in terms of the more sensitive area and the area that we would have more concern about in terms of obstruction. So the fill in the floodplain request and any request for encroaching is reviewed against these criteria. There's a lot of technical criteria, both in the flood hazard overlay district and the, eventually the water protection ordinance, but the floodplain administrator is the county engineer who's here this evening along with the deputy county engineer. Tony Edwards is the deputy county engineer who's available for technical questions and has reviewed this particular request for fill in the floodplain. But this is highlighting some of the information that's required and some of the findings that must be made for the county to potentially approve a fill in the floodplain request. And part of that is the information that's necessary for the floodplain administrator to review that request. The packet included the study that Timmons prepared of the modeling and the findings in terms of, you know, not having those detrimental impacts to the floodplain and, and making the findings that are necessary related to the base flood elevation. The request is to fill to three twenty five. In their report, they did not identify any wetlands to this point. I know we've had that come up in a number of emails, but in our search of databases and our look at the information we have and what was provided, don't believe those are in the area of, that's requested for fill to, based on the information we have to date. And then their packet also includes information about habitat or endangered species and their search of all of those databases in addition to our look at the information we have related to the biodiversity program. This is the exhibit of their concept again, limited to that one point four nine six acre area. This is a retaining wall that may be nine to ten feet tall to create that, that building pad of one point four nine six acres for a potential future use. Again, the area that would be, remain preserved or be required to be replanted. And the, the site does have access off of Morris Lane, which could potentially serve as access to any area that's offered to the public. Switching gears, I know because we don't have a more detailed concept plan with the, you know, parking areas and building envelopes that you would find in some, some items that come before you. In this particular case, this is the broad categories or the broad uses that could be allowed by right in the industrial districts. The industrial district is one where, both in the light industrial and heavy industrial, we have updated our ordinance so that it is a use table that relies on broad categories. And this is how they are. We like our slashes. Broad categories that have been somewhat categorized or grouped together, and we have general definitions. But what we also have is a list of things that are prohibited. This is a list of uses that are prohibited either within the industrial district or, or just prohibited altogether in the county. Those things that would have additional impacts. There are also uses within the industrial districts that could require special use permits. Now, things that are, are auto, are auto oriented uses are commercial uses. They're not those that are allowed in the industrial district. Commercial uses would require special use permits, for example. Unique to the industrial districts are what we may have mentioned when we had that industrial rezoning before you a year or two ago near the airport, is that industrial districts must submit additional information. This is the items, one of the, the last items that is part of our, our process for industrial uses. We have what's called the Certified Engineers Report where we may not know, you know, we may know one user at a site plan stage, but it could change over time in terms of industrial uses going in and out of spaces. So our, our process includes what's called a zoning clearance. So either at the site plan stage or if the use changes down the road, we get what's called the Certified Engineers Report, and that really outlines the exact, the exact nature and the details of an industrial operation, including the processes and the products. And they have to address all of these criteria that we are concerned about in terms of impacts to adjacent properties, but also to, to water, water-related discharges. So that is just something we wanted to mention, and we typically do when we're talking about our industrial uses as another, another step in the process. The conditions of approval that we recommended, if this were to be approved down the road or if the commission recommended approval, address, address limiting the request to what the applicant has proposed in terms of the area that's shown on that concept plan. Two through five are conditions that are typical of floodplain special use permits that we processed. And then the sixth one, I didn't mention that in my presentation, but part of this process has included review from the historic preservation group of staff, and also we've heard from members of the public about making sure that there is this step for an archaeological survey based on the potential for the site to have, have some of those resources. And this would require that phase one study, but also this condition has been updated from what is in your packet to talk about what would the standards for that survey, and also the treat, development of a treatment plan if, if, if anything was found. This is a condition, these conditions have been shared with the applicant and, and the owner in terms of the draft that was in your packet and also with this update. But condition six is one that we've seen used in Velveteer, for example, and Saka. You know, we've seen soccer requests in floodplain areas. So we, we have included the summary in the staff report in terms of the positive aspects with meeting the technical findings and demonstrating through the study and evaluation so far, knowing there'll be next steps with final engineering and final review. And it would allow use of an already zoned LI property. We know that a big, a big concern obviously is that it is impacting a portion of the floodplain, and it is an area recommended for parks and greens systems in our comprehensive plan, which recommends that the primary use of those areas be for preservation of stream buffers. But it is limited, as we mentioned, to that area, and we have, we did recommend approval in the packet. So I will pause for any questions, and we can go back to any of these slides. I know it was a slide-heavy presentation, but thanks.
Thank you. That was really helpful, really comprehensive. So let's see. Any questions for staff? We'll start. Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, one kind of one oh one question with some follow-ups, just for the laypeople in the room. Tell us more again about the difference between a floodway and a floodplain. And the, the correlated question here is, do we have any information on how much of that floodplain has been filled up with stormwater during some of the recent strong storms in, in our area?
So I don't have anything in the slideshow, and I think maybe the applicant can comment on occurrences of flooding on the property. You know, the, the, when I've been out there, this area doesn't have that. This is the concept plan, and this is the floodway again, and then the floodplain. And we also have engineering staff here. The, these are the definitions from our, our ordinance, and, and the county engineer Frank Pole has moved up to the hot seat, but the, the regulatory floodway is where you might expect more flooding and the velocity of the water. And then the flood fringe in this case is a, is a backwater area of the Ravanna River. But Mr. Pole is at the mic now, so I'm gonna hand it over.
Sure. Frank Pole, county engineer. Could you repeat the question?
I think the, the obvious question, sort of floodplain versus floodway, but then I think just what kind of information we have about, about stormwater flood events in that area? How much of this sort of valley was, was filled up with Morris Creek when we've had some strong storms?
I don't have any specific data, but I'm sure it fills up. So when, this is a backwater area from the Ravanna, where the two streams come together. So it backs up to just upstream of this property, which is why when they do the analysis for fill, that it doesn't cause a rise in the floodplain.
That was actually my second question. Yeah, kind of looking at this, this little valley, you know, immediately east of Franklin Street and, and the rest of this part of Morris Creek. If, if we had a hurricane-type event and it really filled up, I mean, how much would this infill affect the capacity overall for, for stormwater movement out of the area?
Well, I mean, the, the hundred-year flood- Well, I mean, the, the hundred year flood has an elevation. So I would expect during a hundred year flood event. That it would reach that elevation, right? The models show. Three hundred, I think it's three twenty-four is the elevation in this area. So. If you have a storm event that's bigger than that, then it would get higher than that, right? And it would back up from the Rivanna. So it wouldn't necessarily just be. The watersheds from. Serving this, the Moore's Creek. It could be the larger watershed of the Rivanna that could affect this creek also.
Of course.
Because of the confluence here. But. Yeah, obviously, if we have a, a thousand year storm event, we're going to have higher, you know, elevations. That's why we asked for one foot freeboard. To provide a little bit of a buffer between. The one hundred year event, which we can regulate. We can't regulate a thousand year storm event. And the Phil elevation, so.
Yeah, that's my questions for now.
Can I expand on one question that you asked that made me think, I thought you were going in the. Maybe you did answer this, but this is like hydraulics one oh one, right? Displacement of that area that you're talking about filling, that we're talking about filling that one and a half acres relative to the overall watershed. Is there. An impact in the rise or displaced due to the displacement? At a say hundred year flood or thousand year flood? I mean, it would be miniscule, I guess, right?
There is, the modeling shows there's no displacement because of the fact it's a backwater area.
Ah, I got you.
So it's like in a bathtub where you can remove. It's, it's backing up into this area, but the flow still goes through the floodway. And again, it's a backwater area that backs up from the Rivanna. And so the water comes into this area and. Essentially, there's enough room for it to continue to get out without a rise.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Paul is still here. So did I understand that? This is, let me understand where this is because I thought I heard floodway. I made a note of floodway fringe. And then I made a note about the, what you just spoke about is that the floodplain. And so I'm trying to have an, I'm trying to appreciate. Is any of it in something called a flood, a floodway fringe?
Yes, there are two components to the flood, the floodplain. You have the fringe and the floodway. Phil is not allowed in the floodway. Phil is allowed in the fringe.
Okay, so what we're speaking about now is really the fringe.
Correct.
Which is part of the plane.
Correct.
Okay, so when, when we do, so when you do, I would suggest that you indent those two. Because I thought they were three separate. Entities. So when you do the next one, just indent floodway fringe and flood and regular, regulatory floodway. So that when you read it, just looks like, okay, I understand this.
Yeah, there are two components of the same thing.
Right, exactly. But I thought there were three different things, which is was like, that doesn't, they, they don't read like three separate things. Actually read like there's.
Like I was making a note.
Well taken.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Mr. Murray?
Oh, I do have other things.
Yeah.
I was just trying to understand.
Oh, sorry.
The domine as opposed to.
I thought you said we'll stop back to you.
No, 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 it's okay. You can, you stay with me now. So, so. If in reading the report, it seemed that, that there's a condition precedent that needs to occur. By the county saying that this is a special approving this for a special use and, and that then FEMA comes alongside and if I. I didn't understand the sort of sequence of approvals. It felt like FEMA, some piece of it had already gone to FEMA. And then FEMA said, no, you need to go do this through the legislative piece. And if you do this through the legislative piece, then FEMA will come alongside of that. So if you could just. Give us that piece.
My understanding is they've got a clomer, which is clomer F for Phil in the floodplain from FEMA.
They did get that?
Yes.
Okay.
And. So FEMA doesn't get involved in the legis, local legislative actions. So, but we require in our ordinance that they get the special use permit. And as part of that, the conditions are they have to get the clomer and the FEMA approvals. And then they'll have to get the lomer after they fill to show that they've met those permit conditions for the clomer.
That's what I thought. It felt like there were, and there were, there were several sort of. Go past go once you get these things, you know, so you, you have to stop here. Then if you get this approved, then you can go here. And if you get this approved, you can go here. And then all there were all these sort of layers of regu, not, not, not burdensome regulation, but required regulations for people to be able to move, move along on, on a, on a process.
Yeah, I'll say it's better. They got the clomer first, clomer F, because it shows us that FEMA approved and reviewed their application and.
Maybe if you go, if you could go to slide seventeen at the bottom, I think that might be one of the things that you were. Certification of floodplain.
Right.
By floodplain, no fill should.
Right. But it was the clomer that I was trying to figure out. So they got that. So they're coming to us. If it'll go to the supervisors and then whatever happens there. Whatever happens at the supervisors, then if it's a yes, then they have to go back to FEMA at some point.
After they fill the site.
After they fill.
If they get approved.
So only if they get a yes, then they go back to FEMA. Okay, all right. So on a visit to the site, it looks like there's a bunch of construction fill already there. How is that good, bad, or indifferent? Or should we even consider that there's construction fill there? And I will, I will, I will try and pull it back if I'm not supposed to have said that.
No, that's fine. Do you ask it? We're, we're looking around because part of the thing is the zoning department has also been talking about that. So Francis is here and speak a little bit to that. Tony would like to talk to you for a second.
Yeah, the, the temporary material. Tony Edwards, deputy county engineer. Yeah, the material that's being temporarily stored on there is to be used elsewhere. And that was why it was permitted there because it's. Certain materials can be stored there in that floodplain.
Okay.
Fringe.
But, but the idea is that it will, it, if there's a yes. Then that we would expect these materials to go someplace else.
Yeah, even before then.
And if there's a no. If, if, if there's a no.
It's still temporary.
Okay, that's, I just want to get the word temporary in some place. Okay.
Just so you know, we, I heard something different at the citizens advisory committee on Thursday about that material. So the applicant might address that as well.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I do have one other question, and this may be for Rebecca, but we'll concede. So right now it's, and this is the whole, I think, this is the whole tension I think people have between the comp plan says this. But the zoning says this. So I'm just going to do those things that people don't like me to do. I'm going to take the comp plan. I'm going to put it over here. Because today it's zone light, light industrial. And I'm also going to put along with that, I think we have an agreement that we're going to take the green stuff off of private land. So we're no longer going to designate private land as being part of the park and greenway. Did I hear that earlier on? Thank you, sir.
You're talking with the, with the new conference plan.
Right.
So the current conference plan for two thousand fifteen shows everything in one color.
Right.
And on that you have everything from homeowners associations. To critical slopes, to stream buffers, to floodplains. And I think the direction we were going with conference plan is those things that are, including county parks. So I think we're going to try and separate out publicly owned land. Or places we might have an easement for a trail system or something like that. So the net effect is this parcel would probably. Be the darker green for the environmental stuff as opposed to the lighter green for the publicly available.
Yeah, isn't it to separate like parks and green systems where people are like, oh, it's going to be a park. I think it's separating those two things.
The piece that I.
But not to say that privately owned land will not be a green system.
I agree. I understand that, but there, there, there's, there's a lot of leverage. I think a lot of excitement about it's called park.
Yeah, whenever people see parks and greens, that was the, the conflicts that we've run into.
Parks and open space. So the, the, the darker colors could represent more open space or environmental.
Absolutely. I wanted to sort of get that out there so we could hear. So what could they do with that piece of property right now that it's zoned LI?
You mean without of.
What could they do by right with that piece of property?
I mean, there's certain environmental and things would be allowed for. The adjacent property, Rivanna Service Authority put a wetland back there.
Oh, okay, okay.
But to put a structure. Or some use like that, yeah, you basically need to bring it out of the floodplain.
So they can get flood insurance.
Right.
They won't be able to get that.
Of course.
And they're not allowed to build there.
And, and, and moreover, yeah. It's, it's part, it's part of our work with FEMA. We're supposed to make sure our building permits, that people aren't putting building permits and putting buildings in places that would be in the floodplain.
Perfect, thank you.
That's, that helps with our insurance.
Got it. Thank you.
County level.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get, because th- those are the nuances that I think is helpful to sort of understand what's going on, what you can and can't do with this piece of property. And to sort of get it out of that, this is, there's not going to be a playground there. Whatever it is, there's never going to be a playground there.
Yeah, so. One of the questions I have is how frequently have these, these maps been updated by FEMA? Are we confident these are the, the. That these are accurate at this time? Because I know that like I'm looking at the hundred year floodplain. We look up on Pantops. We've all, I mean, I certainly remember when that flooded and it wasn't a hundred years ago. I know it's statistical.
Yeah, it's the one percent chance that it could flood at any time during the year. That's what a hundred year means.
Yes, yes.
It's a stupid name.
It is a stupid, but, but I, I feel like that, that. And I've heard some data elsewhere, and I admit this is just hearsay, but I've heard. That a lot of these areas are flooding more frequently than they're mapped to flood. And as climate change is, is causing, you know, more frequent storms, as we're increasing the amount of impervious surface. What is our confidence that, that the current rating of this floodplain is really the. Is, is not only current for now, but you know, ten years from now, this will be, be accurate.
So the maps were recently updated, I think in two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty. There was an engineer that remapped the Rivanna. And the Wollin Mills did some remapping for the bridge structure that went in. So I'm fairly confident of the elevation based on the modeling that I've seen. In terms of future, I, we don't regulate anything above the hundred year, even if there would be an increase in the future. So until that, our NOAA, I guess it's the, there's a couple of ways they could. Address that, but right now it's based on the hundred year elevation. So. The county has no jurisdiction beyond that. My confidence in that. We do see more storms and we've seen some pretty large storms. So they're beyond the hundred year, like that thousand year we had in Ivy. We had some pretty big storms, I think, down in Batesville. So, yeah, we'll see some more frequent storms that might be larger.
I mean, I hope you all remember when Cosners was underwater, I mean, when that was flooding. And so the other one relates to hazardous material storage. Certainly if these places do flood and we know that floods are occurring more often. What are, what are the regulations that we have around the storage of chemicals or other things that if it were to flood, could get into the waterway?
We don't have any other regulations. Once you're outside the floodplain, you're not regulated under floodplain regulations. So something I've talked to our staff about is. Requiring site plans, all buildings to be a foot, at least a foot over the floodplain elevation, even if you're outside of. The floodplain overlay district, right? We don't have that right now, but we don't allow structures in floodplains. So. The vertical line from the edge of the floodplain up into space, you can't even put a elevated building. Over the floodplain, which you can do in many parts of the state. We stop it at the line. And that's why I believe they're asking for Phil here potentially. And that's why we've had a few other projects that have asked for Phil because that removes them from the floodplain. And then they can build on it. You can put parking lots in the floodplain. You can't park overnight in there though. So that's an enforcement issue. We've had a few of those. That got approved, that were approved. So beyond that though, we stop at the edge of the floodplain. When they remove this, that edge will move. And then they, we've also asked for the one foot to offer some, some buffer to your concern about larger storm events. So if there is a larger storm event, they will have some room. To, you know, accommodate a higher rise.
Do we have any general regulations about hazardous materials storage for industrial?
Yes, that's why we, so where the floodplain. May not cover it, there are other ways to cover it or. With our certified engineers report process and where you would get information about what would be stored on site and. Be able to pull in those other agencies that review it, whether it's covered by the building code, the fire marshal, other. DQ permits, then, then we look for it to be covered in those ways for any industrial use.
Thanks.
That diagram that you showed that had, I think, the certified engineers report is the last box. Hover is, I think, a little bit about what you're. Terms of process. I don't remember what page that is, Rebecca.
Which slide that is?
The one that has the little, the process after this public hearing and the board.
Regulatory, the regulatory process.
Yeah, I think I put it, again, so many slides, the importance of the numbers. And, and this, I, I, I hear your point as far as could have clarified the FEMA steps a little better in terms of the clomer and the lomer and, and where they were with that process. But thanks. Mr. Paul for clearing that up.
I think Steph might have just answered my question, which was around buy right and light industrial uses and. Smoke and emissions and odor and things like that. It sounds like that would be checked and reviewed. In that certified report. So if it was a buy right use. The report was saying, hey, your, your exposure to these risks in these areas is X, Y, Z, and then you could say yes or no. Or does it not matter because it's a buy right use?
Well, I can, I can pull that other slide back up. I think that there are. You know, I mentioned that our industrial uses have been updated recently in terms of this being light industrial and. It, it does, it has been updated to either eliminate uses. That are potentially hazardous and would, would cause those emissions, but also. If they are allowed, oftentimes they're allowed by special use permit. But again, that process does cover that. But part of this process, it may not be that. We can cover it locally, but that we are certain it's covered by the appropriate regulatory agency like. That's why some of the other state regulations are referenced. That's what. That's, that is included when we, when we reference the certified engineers report process.
I'm just saying there's, there's a valve that says this project. Can't go on like this if we see something that we don't like in terms of. Odor emissions or smoke emissions or waste that's inappropriate, right? There is a valve that says, hey, this project stops. Through this process, I guess is what I'm trying to get to.
You know, I think our zoning staff is also here in terms of, you know. Once you get to a certain point, if it meets all the regulations, then we may not be able to. Deny it. But I think in terms of how we've set up our industrial districts and with this process. I think you used the word safety valve that we've tried to put as many in place as we could. So that those concerns are addressed.
Yeah, and I'm asking because there's, there's clearly a reason why the comp plan says what it says there, right, for this parcel. So. All right.
And just to be clear too, certified engineers report is required for any. Light industrial use regardless of where.
Regardless of the floodplain.
And if, for example, water discharges. Subject, if, if they don't meet the applicable regulations of the state water control board, for example. Then the project can't be built as designed, right? It would have to be. It'd have to be changes in order to get a certified engineers report that was acceptable.
Yes, and, and also one would assume that after it was built. If it somehow violated it in the future, it would be a violation of those standards.
Mr. Cruz on?
I think a lot of what my questions have been asked and answered, but can you go back to the regulatory process? I think that was very helpful, by the way, Rebecca. I appreciate you putting that there. So. From following this, you know, we're in the special use permit. Process now that they have not. Provided a use, so there's no use that was sent as part of the application. So that would be determined by whoever. Whether they sell a property or whatever happens to the property or they decide to build something. There are some that's, some uses that are by right and within the, the light industrial, but there's some light industrial uses that are not by right, and those would require a special use permit. And then there's some that, you know, like a commercial, you mentioned shops or auto shop.
And then there's some that, you know, like a commercial, you mentioned shops or auto shops or potentially could go there, but it have to be a, so they would have to go back through another special use permit. And even the by rights, you have the engineering, uh, the certified engineering report. And you still have the water protection orders that they have to go through, even if it's by right. I think those safeguards are, are there. Am I, I mean, did I capture that? And then you had obviously the site plan and, and the, yeah, which is.
That, yes, sir. That was the purpose of this slide. And one thing I didn't mention, uh, with this step here, uh, it's not a step, it's a component of our ordinance.
Which, which step?
Is the supplemental regulation step, the section five. So when you look in our ordinance, you'll see it's either by right or by special use permit. And you'll see in parentheses, all, a lot of times in, well, you'll see it across our zoning districts, but a lot, it's common in the rural areas and in our industrial districts. But section five of our ordinance is what we refer to as supplemental regulations. So that may be another set of regulations on top of everything else. So that's what that is. Uh, I don't have a particular use in mind. Uh, you know, there's a lot of, um, regulations around, um, that, that could have with it additional, uh, screening and buffer requirements. Whether it's in the heavy industrial district or the light industrial district, it could also have some of those, um, if you will, safeguards and, or safety valves.
Thank you.
Mr. Firehawk?
Don't have any questions. I understand the application.
Okay, awesome. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. Most of them were answered. Um, could you go back to slide 11, please? So on this, um, site 7740 is the site that was approved in 98 or so for fill in the floodplain. Is that right?
Yes.
And, and that shows in the Parks and Green Systems area, as does some of the other adjacent property. And also over into 7821B on the far right. So I guess I'm just clarifying that there are other areas that are currently developed that are under the Parks and Green space as shown on the comp plan.
It's generously drawn in this area.
Wide, wide marker. Yeah.
Wide marker.
I think, I guess one other question, which may be for the engineers or, or for the applicant, but I'll ask it. So this is a nine foot retaining wall is what we're saying, right? That's adjacent to the floodway. Is there a setback that's? Sorry. Is there, is it, is that right? Nine foot?
We might want to clarify that with the applicant. In the community meeting, they said 11 feet.
Oh, oh yeah, you're right. Okay. We'll clarify that. I was just curious if there is a setback requirement or any other requirement. Cause I saw one image that you shared that I hadn't seen in the materials. I may have just missed it. That showed grades adjacent to the wall that were coming closer to the floodway. It was on one of your slides. It was, I don't remember which slide it was, to be honest.
So the, uh, the final engineering and the final, um,
That one.
The final height of the retaining wall is something that we've commented on. It can't be greater than 10 feet. So, um,
Okay.
And that, that does show, this was in the Timmins packet. It does show the wall here with the solid line. To answer your question about setbacks and, you know, I, within the zoning ordinance purview, there aren't any setbacks applicable to retaining walls. I don't know if there's anything in the flood hazard overlay that.
Is the 10 feet a height limit for retaining walls? Is that where that came from?
Yes. Well, there is that. There is a height limit for retaining walls in one part of the ordinance, but.
Here's our engineer.
Uh, Mr. Paul?
I, I would just say one thing and that is it's 10 feet of fill or 11 feet of fill or nine feet of fill. It's fill to get it out of the floodplain.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily mean it's a wall that's that tall. I mean, you might have a fill slope that stabilized with riprap at the pace of three.
Slope or?
Comes up and may have a wall component as part of it even. You know, the top part of it, the last part, four or five feet, maybe wall kind of thing. And we've seen those locally too. So there's lots of different ways to engineer and place that fill. It does, there are standards that it has to be non erosive. But, um, there are multiple ways to do that.
Okay. I just saw that it says wall height on one of these drawings. But that's fine.
Yeah, and there is no setback.
There is none. Okay.
You just have to stay out of the floodway.
So they, they can't grade into the floodway if this were approved. Okay. Got it. Thank you. All right. Any other bounce backs, questions?
I just have, Chair, I just have, maybe probably one of us knows the answer. Does I, I didn't. So when you go to the site, there's that, that material that keeps silt from running off, running off the, the site, I guess, something. Sorry.
The black.
Yes, the black thing. Is that, is that sort of the boundary? Or is that just, was that just put there just to put there? Or was it, or is it, so maybe when the applicant comes up, now that there's a question about, is that the boundary of the project or not?
I'll let them, my understanding is the silt fence is what's required around the temporary storage.
Temporary fill construction.
But, uh, not, it's not the location. It's just not delineating.
It's not the boundary that we're looking at here. Okay. That's my, I, I can understand that.
Great.
I didn't realize that it was a temporary fill. I thought they were jumping ahead of the game when they did that.
All right. No other questions. I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation.
Good evening. Tim Miller with Meridian Civil Survey. Appreciate you, your consideration of this special use permit tonight. Before I go back to the history, I do want to just address this last comment about the wall. It is a nine foot wall, but there's two foot of fill sloping up for a total of 11 fill. That was discussed the other night, but the wall will only, at this point is only nine feet tall. Just to clarify that before I forget.
Thanks.
A, a little bit of history, this, the owner, Chris Donaldson, it was originally parcel 41B, which is the Wollin Mills Light Industrial and this parcel. And that went through the site plan process, got approved, construction got started. The fill, the excavation for the stormwater management basin had to be temporarily stockpiled somewhere else on that site. County and DEQ all agreed that that was a convenient site for the temporary stockpile. They required certain erosion control measures, silk fence and monitoring and seeding. And that was all addressed at that time. In addition to that, um, there's a lot of rock on the property that was stored there. A grinder was brought in to crush it up and then reuse that as, um, base material for the construction. RWSA at the time was also renovating some of their facilities and had excess concrete that an agreement was made with Chris to stockpile that there and crush that and use that as base material on the construction site. So again, it's all temporary. It's all been monitored and approved by the county and DEQ through this process. At one point during the, after the construction had started, um, some contracts were made to purchase condominiums on the parcel 41B1. And it was during that process that the county required this 41B2 be separated from the main parcel. So now we're talking two parcels, but it's really just the one project with the one owner. And so it was the owner's intent during the site plan process to get the 41B1 approved, construction started, find out what kind of interests and needs there were during that process and then come back and evaluate this area for fill in the floodplain and increase and add some additional light industrial area to the parcel and development. Again, there's such a variation in industrial uses and needs and the owner has decided that it would be preferable to have this area approved for fill, get the fill in place and then find out what kind of needs there are and what kind of uses would be best for this area. Again, why we didn't want to go down the site and process now and then have to come back later to, to amend it or revamp it when the true use is determined. Again, we went through the, Timmins went through the process of evaluating for the clomer F. Lomer is letter of map revision. We were not allowed to cross over into the flood, floodway. All the fill had to be in the floodway fringe. Timmins went through that process with FEMA, determined that there was no increase in flood as long as we remained in the floodway fringe. And that has been approved. Once the special use permit is approved, the site plan is approved, the fill and the wall get constructed. Then they go back to FEMA to get the official letter of map revision approved and that would amend, revise the flood map. Is, is the process that we're going through. So just some clarification there. I believe that's all I have to say at the moment. Um, again, Chris Donaldson is here. See if you have any questions about the property. He knows all about it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And he, uh, you might want to stay there. If we have any questions, that'd be great. Any questions for the applicant? Start, Mr. Firehawk?
No, we had a really good briefing at the community meeting last week, so I don't have any questions.
That's helpful.
Yeah, just given some of the concerns that have been expressed by the community about, you know, the, obviously you didn't choose this as light industrial. The county had, it was already that way, but given the concerns about the fill and the concerns about the condition of that river, have you, have you thought about, um, any kind of, like, any way that that could been, be mitigated, like light, um, sorry, low impact development? Ways of managing stormwater differently that could perhaps mitigate the, the impacts when this is developed?
At this point, we have some initial thoughts on it. We haven't gone into in depth. One of the issues we came, we decided to do was to donate the buffer along the stream, that being the greatest source of treatment before the water enters the stream. And the county is very good at managing these buffers and maintaining them and allowing them to function as well as they can. If it ever becomes a park in the future or some other use, that would be great. But the initial thought was to provide that area as a buffer for any kind of additional treatment before entering into Morse Creek. Once we get into the site plan process, we can evaluate other options that can be done within the fill area of the property. Uh, but at this point, it, it's a little too preliminary to get into that level.
I mean, a lot of these industrial, a lot of industrial buildings, you know, often you have the flat roofs with a rubber liner on top. Um, already kind of set up, um, to be able to handle something like a green roof. So that might be something you might want to consider as you're thinking about it is, is a way that you could minimize impacts on, on the waterway. Bring that as a suggestion.
Chris is very receptive to ideas. Uh, the recycling of the stone and the concrete is one example of him making some effort to do that. Um, he is trying to implement some things on the main parcel there as well as each building gets, um, designed and he has some elements in those buildings that, uh, might fall under what you're referring to. I'm not involved in that aspect of it, so I can't speak to that.
Mr. Beavens?
So I'm the, I'm still trying to get all these parcels together. So your, your applicant, your owner will know this. So the piece that's being done up on, on Belmont Avenue, I guess that's what it's called. That's the place, is all of this part of that piece of property or is that its own separate property? I think some of us remember going there and we had this exploration of a post-civil war rail, railway that was there that my colleague is looking at me. That I said, yeah, what's a what? Um, and so is that that, is all of this one piece or is that piece the piece that's up there, which I will compliment your retaining walls up there? There are some of the nicest, the nicest retaining walls in Alamo County. But is that the same piece as this piece or is this, or the one where the bread, the bread manufacturer, the bread bakery is, is that a separate piece? It is, I'm trying to understand when you say one piece was approved and now we've got two other pieces. Because I could not find 41, I could not find the parcel number that you referred to. And so that just creates cognitive dissonance for me.
During the site plan process and initial construction, it was parcel 40B. And it was on both sides of Morse Creek Lane. So that was all part of the initial site plan approvals.
So the piece up on the, on the hillside was, this was all one piece?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Wrapped around the bakery.
Wrapped around the bakery, which is also part of this.
No.
Oh, so the bakery is not part of this.
Separate parcel.
Apartment building you were talking about, I'm sorry, apartment building you were talking about is the one that's 3045?
Apartment.
Did you mention a?
Right, right. That's what I thought too. That's where I'm trying to get to. Is, 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 is the building on Belmont or Belmont Avenue, commercial or residential?
It's all industrial.
It's all, it's all commercial, it's all light industrial.
So I'm sorry, I don't recall. I didn't mean to say apartments. I have inadvertently said that.
Uh, no worries. I may have hurt wrong.
It's when we.
That's what, that's where I was trying to get to. Okay.
It's when he, there were contracts on two of those parcels for condominium.
That's what you said.
We created the condominium subdivision is when the county, I, I believe it was the county or the condominium required this separate, this parcel to become separated from the main one because there were no ability to put condominiums on the 40B2 parcel now. What the parcel we're talking about now at, prior to this, there was no ability to put condominiums over there. So they asked that it be removed from the condominium develop, development property. And is now 40B1 is the main parcel being developed.
Which is on the hillside.
Yeah, 40B2 is the parcel that we're talking about today.
And 40B1, 40, the hillside piece.
40B1.
40B1, that's light industrial. That's with the retaining walls.
Wollin Mills Industrial Park.
So that's an, okay, that's a lot of industrial. And, and, and that was at some point going to be a condiment, was being thought about being condominium?
It is a, uh, industrial condominium, not a residential.
The light bulb just went off.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking.
Thank you. We were thinking residential.
There we go like, oh.
Yeah.
Yes, it does, of course. Okay. I'm now, I'm now out of my fog.
Very good.
Thanks. Mr. Moore?
Uh, no, actually I think I'm all right for the time.
I'll just ask a couple of quick questions. One is, I think you sort of answered these, but there is no use in mind, right? You've no.
Only a buy right industrial use that's allowed.
And the vision for adding the greens, the greenway, that space that's dedicated to public use on the back side is there wasn't a larger plan associated with that other than just to dedicate that for future public use for whatever that might be, right? Maybe a trail, maybe.
Yes, and hopefully others will follow suit.
Yeah.
On down Morse Creek as, as that gets down the road to have a linear park or a linear buffer that the county can maintain.
Got it. And, and then the last question, and I apologize if I just, this was clear to everybody. It wasn't, it wasn't to me, but that area that's shown as what appears to be sort of a bio retention area. That's, uh, if you go back to one of the plans.
A stormwater pond?
Yeah, that one. That's, that's a stormwater pond?
That's the stormwater basin.
Basin.
The excavated material from that was temporarily stockpiled over here.
And so to Commissioner Murray's question, is there any way to tap into that for water quality or quantity?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Okay. It's uphill from this. It's uphill from where we're.
Uh, I got you. Even after you fill it.
Yes.
Okay.
To get.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before we open it up? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll invite you back afterwards if you'd like to, to, to respond to some of the public comment.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to move now to public comment and, um, I have a sign up list. We'll start with that. And if there are folks who would prefer to speak to this that are not on the site. Uh, we'll start with that and if there are folks who would prefer to speak to this that are not on the sign up list, that's also fine as well. But I'll start with Jenny McCulsky. And as a reminder, you have three minutes of time and when the light turns yellow. I do not mind at all. Are you Eli? All right, just identify yourself, your general area of residence and when the light turns yellow. You can kind of start to wrap things up. You'll have about a minute left.
All right, thank you. I'm Eli Connell. I live at seven twenty Franklin Street, which is directly across Franklin Street from this. And to your point, um, of, you know, hu- higher intensity storms, more increased flooding. We've seen, we've only lived there for about four years at this point, but Franklin Street has filled up several times. To me, uh, this bathtub, I think the engineer made a bathtub analogy of, of if you put something in a bathtub, it, the water wouldn't rise up. I don't really understand that point. Um, i- if we had like. Three acres put in to the floodway fringe, would that be approved? Would that raise the water? No. So like if, would, is that floodway fringe then not taking any water? Is that what you're saying? So could we put it in a, and like, can we fill in the entire floodway fringe without affecting the flow of water?
Sir, I'll, I'll just, if you could, I know this is a little bit of a nuance, but we're not actually here.
Oh, I can't ask questions. Okay.
Now, really, if you just make your points, then we could follow up with questions if we needed to.
Fantastic.
Rather than interchange. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess. I just feel like the, on Nassau Street, also we've put in several residential buildings where we filled in this floodway fringe. Um, and if we're looking at them independently, I agree that, oh, this one small acre parcel. With ten feet of fringe isn't going to make a significant impact on the, you know, base flood elevation. But if we put in, you know, fifteen more of these and then we do fifteen more and then we do one over here and one over here, is that not eventually going to increase? Uh, you know, the flood of these larger scale events that we think most of us can agree on the climate science, we're having a longer hurricane season. We're having more intense hurricanes and we're having more frequent hurricanes. It just seems to me that this is something that we would prove in nineteen ninety when we didn't really know much better. This isn't something we approve now when we have all this climate science that's kind of showing that how important our flood systems are and our paths are. Um, and so that's just coming from me. Again, I live in the floodplain. Obviously, I'm the, the person who's, who feels like they're, you know, most at risk here, but. Uh, that's really it. That's my main concerns. Um, I guess also just looking around Virginia, uh, you know, Clayter Lake and Buchanan County. These places are totally getting, you know, washed away. Um, and I just feel like I can guarantee none of them are thinking, man, we should have put a couple more. Buildings in the floodplain or flood zone or flood wave. Um, it just, again, I, I feel like it's kind of short sighted, but again, uh, that's not to throw stones. Um, from my flooded house. Uh, so that's it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jenny McCulsky?
Hi. Definitely gonna run out of time. Jenny McCulsky, I'm Eli's neighbor, seven eighteen Franklin Street. I purchased my home six years ago with a, um, Virginia first time home buyers grant. A working class person, as are most of my neighbors. Um, I don't know what happens on other county projects when you're working right on the boundary. But I've yet to see any mention of or depiction of what is on the other side of the street. Franklin Street is unstriped, it has no sidewalks, it's pretty narrow. We already have a significant amount of truck traffic from the bread factory that was permitted in nineteen ninety-seven. Chris's main project, as you know, on the slope is, I think, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet permitted. It isn't remotely close to being done and it's been under construction for six years. The rub, we have been living with that rubble grinding directly across the street from us as he builds those roads. That pressure on our community is as yet untested in many ways, runoff, noise, truck traffic. Franklin Street has some of the most, I've lived all over Charlottesville, this is the street where you see. People walking every hour, all the time, old, young, children playing in the street. Many low income people who don't have cars. They ride bikes. We have motorized wheelchairs coming down Franklin Street, but this is going to be the only mode of access to, to this industrial park. Which at least has its own entrance, entrance on Morse Creek Lane. This development isn't showing how you would exit and enter, but you would have to do so from Franklin Street. Directly in front of our homes. He can also by right go as high as sixty-seven feet, which would block out all of our morning sun. Um, a couple of other quick points. So an isolated park on the rear of this lot would be very unsafe. And difficult to maintain and a liability for the county. It is well below the grade of Morse Creek Lane and it would have. Large culverts on either side of it, so very difficult for any kind of landscape equipment to get into, maintain the weeds or anything else. There is no connectivity to the trail system at all. The Ravenna Trail is on the other side of Morse Creek and the fabulous footbridge at the wool factory takes you across and passes you safely. Under Monticello Avenue and pops you up out at Quarry Park. So this is. A, I don't know, red herring, I don't know what you're going to point, but there's no opportunity to connect to trails there. Um, it would be an incredible site if it were, the entire site were donated to this community for a park. As you know, Habitat for Humanity purchased the trailer park very recently. They have no. They have kinsaneras with a hundred people in tiny little tents behind their trailer. Like an actual park here would be wonderful and there's a creative ways to do that at the surface level that actually have stormwater mitigation. Techniques underneath of it. Um, I think that the state, county, city and its partners have invested over fifty million dollars on this area in the past seven years. Including the removal of the dam on the Ravenna for aquatic species, the remediation of the RWSA for. Smell, the rehabilitation of the woolen factory and the habitat for humanity acquisition. So it's not nineteen ninety-seven anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your squeezing that in. Uh, that is all I have on the sign up list. Is there anyone else here this evening would like to speak to this issue? All right, seeing none, I will go back to the applicant. Is there?
There's no one online either.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
You go back to the applicant. Is there anything you'd like to ask? Is there anything any of the commissioners would like to ask the applicant? I have one question for you, if I could. Related to one of the comments. That was made. There was a question of, uh, there was a statement about a hundred and sixty thousand square, gross square feet by right. Can you explain to us how that was calculated, if you know?
Uh, the approved site plan for the forty B one parcel. The Woolen Mills Industrial Park.
For the forty B one, that was after it was subdivided off.
Um, that was the. Part of the original site plan parcel and is now the. The site plan approved for Woolen Mills Industrial Park is on that parcel.
So.
And there's multi, uh, uh, eleven sto- eleven buildings proposed and all, each has. Two to three floor levels. So the total square footage amongst all those buildings and all those floors. Is, is.
One sixty.
I believe so.
So it's not just your site. It's, it's not just the site, the one point five acres that we're talking about.
Oh, no, no, no. None of that square footage is included in this. On this parcel forty B two.
Got it.
It's all the forty B one Woolen Mills Industrial Park development. Across Morse Creek Lane.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? I did not. You do not?
Let me ask, let me, let me ask another question. I might get to that.
Sure, Mike.
So somewhere, I don't know if I read it in this, in the applicant or, or if I read it in as a, as sort of a hypothesis in the staff report. But there was some mention that there could perhaps be an entrance off of Morse Creek Lane into, into this project and that people, that there was another way to bring people on to this project. Except for Franklin Street.
The area to be dedicated to the county has access from Morse Creek Lane. Easement from Morse Creek Lane, the. One point four nine acres will have access off of Franklin.
Off of Franklin, okay. So then, again, now, I thought that, so I was thinking that if it was off of that, then they really were looking at sort of a, 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 um. A grouping of space, you know, that is just across the street. So to come to the chair's question then, so. Right now, there's one building under roof on the hillside. How, are there going to be other buildings on the hillside that just aren't under roof right now?
Uh, yes, I believe the proof site plan again shows eleven buildings. On the forty B one parcel on the other side of Morse Creek Lane.
Okay. And that's, and that's where we're getting the square footage. That's where we're getting the square footage for, so the, the, the two, the forty.
B two.
Forty-two parcel is nowhere included in that or being taken into consideration for that, that square footage.
None of that square footage will be on this forty B two parcel.
Think so, yeah. So that one sixty number that we've been hearing is already allocated somewhere else.
Already under construction.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought that person was assuming or we were assuming that that was on this site.
No.
Have you done a square footage calculation estimate? I know you can't really do that without knowing what you're gonna put there, but. No?
Okay.
Have not. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, nobody is online.
No, sir.
I think we close the public hearing and go into deliberation. Who would like to start? I don't always have to go to the end. Anyway.
Yes, I'll start. I mean, I think the way that this area has been planned, um, you know, speaks of sort of like early twentieth century, you know, when we thought of. The river, the areas along the river as sort of waste areas where we could just, you know, stack industrial uses and other things there that were. That we wouldn't have wanted to put somewhere else in the community. And I think. It, it also speaks to this idea, um, that I brought it before about. We have sort of, we have these, these greens, these areas that we've designated for, um, the parks and greenways. Um, that that's the ideal location of them and yet. Um, really, we have sort of a developed to protect mentality. And this is a perfect example of this, right? So we, we have, we have an area that. Ideally, this would, would all be parked. Um, but. In order to get this tiny little postage stamp of green space, this, that's actually not really worthwhile to the community. I mean, they would almost. Benefit more from, from a sidewalk and a bike lane. Um, to, to get that tiny little postage stamp, we have to fill in the floodplain and, and develop the rest of it to sort of get this. This tiny bit, you know, back. And so. It, it's a shame that, you know, outside of this, as we look at AC forty-four, that we don't have some, you know, land swap program or. Um, transfer development rights program or something else that would allow movement of, take these areas that we do want as parks and green space. And trade them for other areas and a development area that would be more optimal for, for light industrial. Um, that, that in a large flood, um, couldn't see chemicals wash, wash our waterway, um, or, you know. You know, because as I said, and we've, I've seen those areas, you know, flood. We all have. Um, the storms are, are going to get worse. So I mean, that's. Um, the other thing is just as, as we are increasingly adding more and more impervious surface. Um, you know, the, the floods are, it's, it's not just climate change, but it's also just the amount of impervious surface. It's adding more and more. Water to the system. Um, there's an area, um, up on. There's another area, the Ravenna, um, where, you know, farmers talked about, you know, once upon a time, they used to be able to take their cattle, like just. Walk them across, but now there's these huge canyons where they can't, um, that's impossible, like, you know. Because there's that, been that much soil removed from the landscape and it's all because of stormwater.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I can tag on to that since my comments are similar. Um, yeah, I mean, there's lots of things that we can do with engineering. With big machines and modern equipment. I mean, there are lots of things that one could do and so we do have the ability to build. Up the soil and el- create an island, an elevation that will then put a structure that is out of the hundred year floodplain. That's true. We also could, uh, pipe the creek. And pave it over and then we wouldn't have to have a buffer. Uh, you could actually get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers to do things like that. Um, but should we? Right? So that's, that's where I'm coming from. The hundred year floodplain has a very important hydrologic function. In allowing during a storm, as the water is rushing down, because it has this area, it spreads out. And dissipates the energy of the water. And then some of that sediment load actually drops out in that slower water at the margins. That's why floodplain soils are so rich. That's why people like to farm them because it's some of the best soil because that's. Where those floodwaters dissipate and lose their energy. When you constrict the area that the areas, the water's flowing through, it goes faster. So on a sort of like large scale, looking at the whole area. I understand what Mr. Paul is saying and I understand what Timmons has said that this will not raise. The elevation of the flood in overall, but I'm also looking at this from two perspectives. One is death by a thousand paper cuts. Which is all the little fills cumulatively all together. I don't have the confidence that we're looking at it from that perspective. The other, uh, aspect is again, what I just said about floodplains. They have a purpose. And we really should not build in the floodplains. Alamo County is actually more restrictive. Um, we don't let you put subdivisions in the floodplains. Um, you know, our, our neighbors in Charlottesville allowed a development of housing in the floodplain. Through an area which I used to kayak when the water was up. And, and too bad for those folks when we get another big storm. So. You know, I, I believe very strongly and I have a thirty-five year career in floodplain and watershed management. And so I've spent my whole life trying to keep people out of floodplains. And so I would also suggest to you that. The zoning, yes, is from nineteen ninety-seven. Um, but in our comp plan, never mind the park thing for a moment, uh, to my commissioner at the other end of the dais. We're not suggesting this become a park necessarily, but it's, it's designated as green system because the county did go along and say. All of these floodplains, we're gonna call them green systems. Because they are act, not, don't always think of the earth as just a place where we are going to recreate or not recreate. Right? There are other, there are ecological functions that are going on there for biota, for salamanders. For all kinds of other critters that are also under our stewardship. So. Where I'm coming from is I'm, I'm not in favor of allowing fill in the floodplain. I think that zoning can be old. Zoning can be wrong, zoning can be a bad idea. I think this zoning is outdated. I agree with Lonnie. There are a lot of. A lot of reasons why we developed long rivers was because that was a transportation system. We had to move goods, the Ravenna, we put goods on batos on their van and sent them down to Richmond. So. You know, there's a lot of reasons why people develop near rivers, also for water supply. But, but today, putting industrial along our rivers is a, is also a bad idea. So I don't, I don't think the zoning is good. We're not here tonight to decide about the zoning, here to decide whether we think it's okay to. Fill in the floodplain and I'm going to stick with a comprehensive plan. I think it was wise. To say that this is a green system and I don't care if no one ever recreates in it. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming and I, I, you know, I have a lot of hydrologic reasons and ecological reasons. For the way that I am presenting my position tonight. Um, I don't think we're getting a huge return for allowing this site to become its industrial use by getting it out of the floodplain. That's, that's it. I will now step down off my soapbox and yield to my colleagues.
Next.
Uh, I certainly do not disagree with the, the technical attributes my, my colleagues have shared. And, uh, I'll just go on record by saying, I hate this image that I'm looking at right here. We're like. Look at the, the neighborhood to the left of Franklin Street. What socioeconomic band do you think? Those people are in. Where else in our county would you see something like this?
Proximity to.
Yeah, in an industrial park, right? I mean, talk about design injustice on top of.
Yeah.
All the things that my commissioners have said, there's a reason why the comp plan says what it says. There's a reason why we don't commonly. Build in a floodplain. There's a reason why you can't put a building on there today, like. Those reasons are there for a purpose and so, um, I won't go ahead and beat the drum that my, my previous two commissioners have. I certainly agree with them. They've said it so eloquently, so, um, I'm a pretty hard no on this one, so.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh, I just said I'll go.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Uh, this is, this is an odd, odd one. Um, and I don't think I've, I've seen one of these in my two years on this commission. Um. This is especially odd because the city county line is right there. We talked about what's across the street. Or we're talking about the street for that matter, and that's, that's city and. Uh, we barely speak to the city, which is kind of a structural problem. Um, and, and I think we, we have so little regional cross boundary cooperation, even though for all intents and purposes, this is one. Area, this is one neighborhood, literally across the street. Um, a- and, and frankly, Franklin Street, from what I heard from some commenters, seems very neglected by the city. It seems like they ought to make it suitable for trucks. And they make it, ought to make it like, have sidewalks and lines. So take that under advisement, city, because I know I have a lot of standing with you. I, I, I find the, the proffer of an acre and a half along the river kind of goofy. It doesn't do anything with us. It's like if I proffered my old iPhone six. Um, you know, it's just the way, like wedge between, um, you know, industrial and sewage treatment and would be hard to get to. Um, and it's already, you know, unbuildable anyway, because it's within the stream buffer, but hey, okay, it's, it's a fine proffer, thanks. Uh, at the same time, uh, and I also do hear some things about, uh, I would call a con, uh, removal of acres from the flood, floodplain. It's not great for the hydrologic reasons that I think you know a whole lot more about than I do, uh, Commissioner Firehawk. Uh, that said, I I also hear the county engineers describe their study and their conclusions. And and I've read the methodology and it seems to make sense and and I don't have the expertise to contradict that. You know, we asked some questions and and the county engineers made logical cases for why this isn't a major detriment. The pros on this, uh, is that if you're gonna have light industrial operations, we already have a lot of light industrial operations right here. It's next to a sewage treatment plant, for crying out loud. Um, and and, you know, the bakery and the other things, you know, the, the, the new light industrial going in. I mean, if we're going to have light industrial, it it literally is adjacent to some of the light industrial we've got. And other than than sort of the terrain change, um, y- you know, the other piece of this is that we've talked about and heard from our economic development office. Uh, in budget season, we heard a lot more about the need for commercial and light industrial because it actually pays into the county more than it requires. Um, I I don't know how big of a, a, an impact this would have. We don't really talk about economic impacts on this commission too much. But at the same time, we have very, very few of those parcels. We've talked about that some and and heard presentations about that. Um, so I do wonder if it would, I, I mean, I, I, I do hear a, a not unreasonable approach and the the engineers say it wouldn't really hurt things, uh, on the water side. So I'm thinking, okay, this could be a good new parcel for, uh, for things that do improve that tax revenue. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I I don't have a strong view on this. Um, but I I would lean toward, um, you know, accepting it, but I also don't love it. Yeah.
Hard one. Mr. Bennett?
Sure. So, um, I'll get it off the thing. So I'm supportive of this and let me say why. Um, those of us who've been here for a while, remember that this used to be a stockyard, used to be down there. Stockyard and a cafe and some things with roosters used to take place down there at some points on the side. And I'll let you all think about what that is. So I don't.
Hogwaller?
Yeah, hogwaller. So I, I, well, and while, so I appreciate what we're trying to do there. I also have to appreciate that out of all of the acreage that there, the five point five, so five and a half acres is not gonna have anything done to it. This is gonna be green with newts and salamanders and cottonmouths all running around there, coming off, coming off that thing, or water moccasins, I should say, probably not cottonmouths. Water, we have water moccasins. Well, I've had one come up my ear and say, hey, I'm a friend of yours.
No cottonmouths.
Um, and so, and 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 so, or or would you prefer, um, the other one, just the old copperheads? We do have copperheads.
Good copperheads.
We do have.
And settle the.
And we settled the herbicide. And and so, and so for me, you know, we, we've been, as my colleague to my right said, it, we've been, w- we have been challenged of taking LI space out and making it residential over the last few years. And so for me, an acre and some change being set up for a pad to be light industrial also does something else for me, as you've known, we talk about, I'm about economic development. Some about putting jobs in places that people could walk to, contrary to what my colleague to the left is sort of saying, saying there. What's happened there is, 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 is what is, what has unfortunately happened with our housing stock. And what has happened with our housing stock is really about economics. Is that people do not have the way to move to something different so that they can actually move. There's, it was a wonderful piece in the Atlantic, if you want to look at sort of what's happened to the inability for people to move, which is how people moved up in their, in in their sort of social standing. And a lot of it had to do with economics. And so by trying to look at this as an area where we're trying to consolidate, we've got Broadway, which I don't believe this commission was even remotely appreciative of that becoming a residential area. Remember, we had that come to us, we had staff bring us something about, could we turn this into sort of this sort of bohemian art place over there? None of us supported that. We were all very uncomfortable about that changing there. This to me feels like it is, it is, it is part of what's happening on Broadway. And it's also when I went to look at that, the, look at what happened on Ma- on on Mount Bellevue, I was surprised because when we looked at that space, we were all saying, oh, nothing's gonna happen here because this is such a challenging space. When we, I think David Bines took us out there for a little visit at some years ago. And now, when I went out there just the other day, hey, I give him credit for not blocking the, the building's view from right next to it, but also giving them the thought that they were thoughtful in how they did whatever they, what those, those walls, whatever they're called, the, the retaining walls. And so for me, I'm trying to think, where are those places in the county that we can co-locate light industry? Okay, this one happens to be in this location, but this is a history, that there's a, there's an antecedent history, antecedent history about why this became the light industrial place. It's not, that's, that's longer and bigger than what we're doing here tonight. I, I think that when, when the applicant has to deal with, deal with moving water off the street down, that they're gonna be challenged to do that in a way that's going to be, hopefully be helpful for that piece of property. And it's not going to be like it is now, which I, there is a gully there that I think water, water comes off of the street that's, I think, hit between Hinton Avenue and Franklin Street and it just runs down there. Is that Carlton, is Carlton? Okay. So it comes down Carlton and it just runs down there. So that I would assume that it, in the, in the, in the treatment of this space and of this land, they're going to have to deal with it. They just can't have water running across the property. If so, then that's a true problem. We have, we have a different problem with that. But if not, then I think this may in fact help mitigate some of the problems that we have water. So for me, while I understand and I appreciate my, my, my colleagues, um, wanting to preserve this, if we look further down the road, there's a whole heck of a landscape of particularly behind the livestock, the, the former livestock place, there's a whole bunch of land that that's never gonna be developed. It, it just is not gonna be developed. And so I'm okay for an acre, an acre and some change.
And I just, just tag back though, I, I just wanna say, you know, we, we, staff has done their job and is talking about what the surrounding uses are in their light industrial. But it is a cross from residential neighborhood. And some personal history, I used to be vice president of the Belmont Neighborhood Association and I hand delivered na- newsletters every quarter to each and every one of those trailers and all the houses there and spent a lot of time down in that neighborhood. And so, and also I did water quality monitoring of Morris Creek for ten years and actually got better over time, believe it or not.
It did.
Um, but it is an impaired waterway and it is suffering from sediment pollution. And it is suffering from extreme stormwater, does have bacterial contamination. It's a TMDL contaminated waterway. So it, it's an, it's an impaired creek and I'm trying to minimize the impacts to it. But it is a, also a residential neighborhood. So I just, again, to hearken to, uh, one of my other commissioners' comments a moment ago, it, you know, it is a place where people live. And I think that we try to look at issues of social justice a little bit differently these days in terms of putting industrial right next to residential. And, you know, we shouldn't ignore our neighbors across the street simply because it's a different jurisdiction. I'm not accusing you of doing that, but I just don't wanna say this is an industrial area when literally right across the street is a residential area that
And, and, and so.
people lived there for decades.
They've been there, they've been there for more than decades. That whole area up there has been something that's been engaged in, particularly that part of the community, has been engaged in in having and and providing shelter for folks for more than just decades. It's been close to a hundred years. And so, but, but my piece is, is that if we go to Carlton Avenue, Carlton Avenue from the underpass over to whatever the road is that goes up to the edge over there, that on that side of the street is, is light industrial, is warehousing.
Yeah, I know the neighborhood really, really.
It's, it's warehousing.
I lived there for nine years.
And so it's not like the pad in Crozay that is under EPA stewardship. This is a piece that I, if, if I see the u- the, the uses there, they're not, they're not dirty uses, if I can use that expression. They could be perhaps another baker. It could be some storage that could be there, a storage or some sort of logistics that we, we seem to need more logistics now. Um, I mean, a logistics use. And that's a clean use that may in fact offer some of the individuals who are living there a job. And that to me is the important thing. Are we putting jobs and because we talk about bicycle, bicycle lanes and and getting people to places without their cars? Are we creating centers that a person could walk to or a person, person could easily bike to, that they could find employment? And this for an acre and some change, to me, feels like that could be an opportunity there, particularly since now I found out there's, there's gonna be eleven units right up on the side, on the side of that hill there. And so that's why for me, given given all of the pieces that you so rightly and smartly lift up to it, I'm also trying to figure out, how do we not just have a piece of property that it just becomes a temporary wayside for construction in fill for some X period of years? But in fact, we can move that along and have that become a productive piece of property.
Yeah, and it is a very, i- is a relatively light footprint, considering that they're taking only a small part of the parts. I understand that. I mean, as fill projects go, I mean, there was a, Charlottesville itself had a, in its comp plan, year, many years ago, had a, had a plan in the appendix done by Tortigallas and it showed that we could just fill in the whole Rivanna floodplain with these massive walls and they could put hotels on top. And then we could look down into the cavern that was the Rivanna River.
I remember that.
And yes, it was a terrible plan.
Yeah.
Uh, thank God Charlottesville's not doing that, but it, you know, I mean, there's, there's been lots of bad plans out there and I, and I appreciate this one could certainly be more destructive. You know, but.
One thing to add to that, too, I think there was a recent, I don't know how recent it was, but there was, I believe it was recent, a situation where an application came before the city to fill floodplain, the city denied it and then purchased the piece of land.
Yes, they did. They've come full circle.
Yeah.
But this is, this is a challenging one for sure. And I agree with, with what's been said on both sides of this, of this argument. Conversation.
Cut to the bargain.
Which I appreciate, which I appreciate. You know, where, where I'm landing on it is that there is, there is over five and a half acres that are being dedicated. It's a preserve, basically. It's, it's not just a strip along the river, but it's, it's that open area that from an ecological standpoint is of benefit. I don't know how that would connect to the wetlands. I don't know if part of that is wetlands or whether it can expand the wetlands into that at some point. Um, I'm, I'm not sure. Perhaps, I guess depends on what happens hydrologically with the, with the fill. I also don't think it's a huge amount that's being, you know, what is it, so thirty percent of the site? Um, twenty percent of the site? The majority is dedicated. We always talk about mixed use and the importance of mixed use and bringing jobs into walkable areas. And so this is an area that I'm not sure what percentage of these, of the residents have vehicles and can move around. Maybe all of them can, maybe some of them rely on, on transportation, but this would be more jobs and more jobs are coming with the other buildings that are being built. So I think that is a huge benefit as well. We also have many examples of light industrial across the nation that are turned into retail, turned into very livable areas. Um, and you don't know if that could happen here, but it could happen down the road. I just came, you know, uh, well, not just in, in, in late summer, was in Albuquerque in an area, and I lived in Albuquerque years, years ago. And it was an area that was very much in blight, uh, used to be industrial, light industrial, and now it's thriving. And it's all retails and shops and and artists and all kinds of things. Um, actually, there wa- there was a, there was a nursery. I don't know if this could, maybe this can become a nursery. Um, so for the applicant, there is an opportunity of how they can, this, this can engage the community and maybe somehow become a resource beyond jobs, which is obviously that's a huge resource. Uh, perhaps thinking about what happens in the, in the frontage of that, of that site. Uh, so I would certainly encourage thinking about that as it's developing. Obviously, you, you have, you didn't propose a use yet, something you're still formulating. Uh, so think about that as well. How does it engage the community? You have a residential neighborhood across the street. And so I think that should play into, into the thinking of developing the site. Uh, but in all, I think there's, there's a lot of benefits that, uh, outweigh some of the problems that we all feel this also has. Um, so for that, I, I'm in support of it.
I'll throw out some ideas, um, and, you know, I tried to approach these things as objectively as possible, which I know everybody does, and I really respect all the comments that have already been made. I don't think I disagree with any of, any of the comments. Um, they're all really well thought out and reasonable and logical and, um, and helpful. I, you know, I had sort of both sides of these things as I was looking through it. And I've got the sort of the side in favor and the side against. And the side in favor is just to cut to the chase, tipping the scales against the side against, if that makes sense. So generally in favor of this, um, limited by right uses. The applicant mentioned it's likely they'll be pursuing a by right use. Um, there are numerous checks and balances in place that we saw in the staff report, which I thought was very helpful to help me understand kind of what's next, help us understand what's next. Um, there have been existing impacts, uh, ingrading in this area, not to say that that's the right thing to have been done, but they do exist. Um, this is a small fill area, I did the calc, I think it's like twenty-one acres, or sorry, twenty-one percent of the total seven acre parcel, the remainder being a portion of it in buffer and then the other portion being in, in, um, remaining untouched floodway. Um, I was a little uncertain about that wall and if they can actually construct it outside of the floodway. So as I understand it, it has to be constructed outside of the floodway. So there's that checks and balances again, that'll have to be shown in whatever site plan they're providing. Um, agree with the need for light industrial use. Um, we know it's almost a little bit of cake and eating it too, where we talked about the fact that we want light industrial, we don't want to impact the rural area. We need to unlock the ability to develop in the industrial area or in the development area, sorry. And I think this might, this is an opportunity to do that. The, we talked about buffers, I mean, the substantial buffer, you know, the location of the fill is a little bit, it's a, it's a, a little bit of, if you push it back towards the river, you start to create that buffer that you provided or mentioned between the use and, uh, and the residential area, which I think is a good thing. But then you're also getting closer to the river, which is not a good thing and you're getting into the floodway. So I think this tries to strike, strike a balance. I would say and echo what Commissioner Perezana said to the applicant about trying to create some sort of a buffer. It's obviously not an entrance corridor, it's not gonna have ARB oversight. Um, but sensitive to the adjacent neighborhood, I think is important. Appreciate the fact that the, the applicant was looking at reusing material to help with sustainability. I think that was a good thing. And the fact that it was in a backwater area, uh, Mr. Paul, I think, was very helpful to understand that as well. Um, I don't think we're setting precedent here. Uh, we don't set precedent, obviously, on individual parcels. So, you know, on the other side, a lot of the things have been said, I'm not gonna restate it, restate the, the negatives of this. Um, I agree with all of them. It's just, um, slightly maybe to what Commissioner Moore said in favor on the positive side, but also it's a tricky one, right? It's not a full, I'm a hundred percent. I'm, I'm at least fifty-one percent in favor of this.
And, and Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I mean, I'd just say that this is just gonna keep being like this, the, the, we just don't have all the easy sites left.
Right, right.
We're gonna, this is just gonna be our future.
That's a great.
As we keep trying to be conscious of keeping our footprint overall in the county tight, we're, we have these weird sites left. That's what we have left. So I rec- I recognize this is, this going to be the dynamic over and over again. And we're gonna have to wrestle with those two sides of the equation, I should put it.
And I think, you know, the comprehensive plan is another thing, right? That, that it is there. Staff mentioned that it was sort of generous. Um, and I was, as, you know, as sort of my other job, I was a part of some of the mapping of the comprehensive plan with some of the green space and I understand that, how that was actually undertaken. And there is, it's in, it's aspirational, um, and important to pay attention to. I'm not sure it's, it's lines are actually hard lines.
So, so I, on, on the green space piece, so there, there's the piece that I, I wanna say, what is it, what is a green taking? And you've heard me say this before, because when we have these kind of conversations and there's anything green on the, then we have a, a, a number of very passionate people saying, but it's a green space. But no, it's private land. And when it's private land, the county, I'm saying this, the county needs to be very sensitive to how it's colored, so that it doesn't look like it's a ecological te- taking. And maybe, I think that's how we're gonna get to it with the hashing and the, and the, and the different colors. But I've just, in my time on the, on the commission, whenever anything looks green, and this was particularly when we were in Crozay, when we were looking at lots of things in Crozay, anything green in Crozay was verboten. Even though, as I've said a few times, if that's how you feel, then buy it.
Yeah.
Then you can make it as green as you want it, make it as green. But if it's a private piece of property, then there needs to be, I think, and then we can probably get to this too, this does happen in places. There needs. There needs to be some sort of intentional conversation with the owner of the property to say, this is what we're doing. This is what's going to happen. The public's going to see this as your property. Perhaps that's another layer in the uses. Said if we, if we come in and say that your property is a parkland, that you should get some sort of tax benefit from it.
Well, I, I'm, that's, that's a very interesting idea and there, there is some, there may be some ways to do that. I actually like, you know, what Charlottesville did here, they had a situation, you know, where, with a floodplain and they, they went out and they purchased it. And I think, I think about, you know, when we're in our comp plan, where we're designating these areas as, as, as green systems, that, you know, it's the same way as when we are looking at places where we might want industrial or where we might want, or we might want residential. It's aspirational. But we have to have a way to reach that aspiration. And just because we, we say it's ideal state, you know, we have to have a way to get there. And I think we're lacking some of the toolsets that we need right now to achieve some of those areas that we've said that we, we want them to be green systems. I don't think those tools are adequate right now. So, and the other thing I'd say too, is I think that there are, there, there are ways that other localities work. They have other designations of sensitive areas. Resource management areas, for example, where they can say, in this area, we understand that development is going to occur there, but it has to be low impact. It's got to be done with a sensitivity to stormwater. And I'd hope that we could get, get that way with sites like this too. I would feel a lot better about this project if we knew off the bat they would adhere to low impact development standards.
Right, like they could buy offsite water quality credits and not treat the water quality on site. They, they can do that under state code, so they can do that. They, I'm saying that you can't, we don't have those tools right now.
We don't have those tools.
We don't have an overlay called sensitive area. And some localities have done that.
I think one thing, you, you know, you use the word aspirational. I think one very positive thing that we've been talking about in AC 44 is to try to make those aspirations actual actions and achievable.
Instead of just coloring the maps.
And I think we've made a lot of progress in that area as well. Well, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I mean, this is in my district, if that's okay with everybody. All right. And I think I need to also say with the, uh, subject to the conditions as well.
Correct. I noticed that there was a suggested motions that didn't include conditions, but I'd suggest that if the motion is to approve, it'd be with, with the conditions and for the reasons stated in the staff report.
So I will move approval, I will recommend approval of SP 2024 dash 26 for the reasons outlined in the staff report and the conditions stated therein.
I, I, I don't know whether Ms. Ragsdale, whether the conditions on the presentation were different than the ones in the staff report.
Yes, it should be the conditions in the presentation, because we went over the change to condition six.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. I should have.
That's right. So I'll amend that to state, I'll amend my motion to include conditions as presented in the staff report.
The, the conditions presented in the presentation.
In the presentation, this evening, on this date. April 22nd at 6:00 PM. All right, we had a second, I think. Great. Any discussion, further discussion? All right, maybe we have a roll?
Mr. Moore? Mr. Bivins? Mr. Murray? Mr. Claiborne? Mr. Missile? Mr. Carrizana? And Ms. Farhawk?
No, and when saying no, you're to say the reason. So the reason for my no is because it does not comport with the comprehensive plan that calls for this area to be parks and green systems. It is also not supportive of our comprehensive plan goals for protecting natural resources.
Thank you. And I, I know the applicant knows this, but just as a reminder, we're recommending approval. We're not approving. You guys know that. All right, thank you. We will move on to, we're out of the public hearings. We'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports from, that commissioners would like to share? Thanks to staff too, for showing up. Everybody, thank you.
Yes, I have one. So the MPO tech meeting, Matt, ends. And we approve the, we approve the draft unified planning work program. We had a presentation about that. There's also a, a nice presentation about the safe streets and rids for all FY 25 grant application. And, you know, as, as you know, I'm, you know, pedestrian safety is something I'm very interested in. So the idea with this grant would really be, you know, gathering data about ways that we can make streets safer. And I think that that's, you know, it's, it's really work that needs to be done. So it's, it's very exciting. And then we had an update on the existing, the pre-existing grant, the Move Safely Blue Ridge. And, yeah.
Great. Any others, reports?
We went to the CAC, we talked about what we just heard about.
Yes, staff gave our CAC report.
Chair, could I, should I ask Commissioner Murray, was there any sort of, today, there was a bunch of stuff that came out about what the federal highways, highway administration is not going to do. Which seemed like it was cutting out a number of projects that we may be up for funding.
Oh, you mean the federal highway administration cutting out funding for things? Okay.
Cutting out funding. Are they talking about that on the MPO? Or the people from VDOT talking about that? I guess that's what it would be.
I think, I, you know, there is that specter, but nothing's, you know, nothing, it's all unknown right now, right? So, I mean, I think one of the things that, that has impacted budgets, I mean, right now is just, you know, all the snow and weather that we had that required diversion, yeah. So, but in terms of the impacts of what the feds might do. I mean, you know.
All right, any other committee reports? All right, maybe we, we can move on to the board of supervisors meeting, April 16th, 2025. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, sir. Well, we went and took AC 44's chapters of thriving economy and community facilities to the board. Fair amount of discussion about, mostly the community facility stuff about how we should be working to, you know, I guess the, the, some errors in the plan we needed to clean up. And so we got the, mostly spelling errors and typos. I guess I shouldn't be too hung on that. I'm hung on it because my staff should have brought that to them. But anyhow, that made it through the, the board. Burke Mar Flats was an interesting one. As you all recall, that was the project that you all, I guess staff first brought you a set of plans for that, that didn't, that had a particular connection running between Woodburn and up to, down to Burke Mar. And then you all were like deferred it, money more, green space. Board supported, where you all had pushed forward on that one. I think highlighted a lot of it being close to walkable areas and that emphasizing the green space and walkability, they, they prioritized, like you all did. So I thought it's string, interesting observation. We also took the, we also took the, the canine kennel.
That was interesting.
Application, that was the young couple that was up at Stoney Point. And you recall, I believe you had him suggested, Mr. Claiborne suggested they make it bigger to 12, 1200 square feet. And the board actually suggested that they go from a limit of 12 dogs up to 20 dogs.
Really?
Yeah, that was offered and, and.
Yeah, they suggested more dogs. I didn't understand why that came up for the board to the, get in. Was it because the applicant might grow their business and they were trying to save them coming back?
Mr. Callaway, Mr. Callaway, I think recognized that the, you know, they were doing that as an economic, you know, effort to help the, the, the husband who obviously, you know, was forced out of his previous career.
Right, to make it viable.
To make it more viable for him and to keep him from having to come back and.
For two, for eight dogs, the eight, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So those were interesting discussions at that meeting.
And it passed.
And they, they both, they, they both passed.
So they're making the facility bigger than, they'd have to make the facility bigger, but I think there were a capacity with the dog.
If you recall, Mr. Claiborne talked about, you know, the size of the building and looking at it, 1200 square feet.
But he was talking about like, it just seemed like it was tight anyway. They had bathrooms, it just didn't seem like architecturally you had enough room to do what you wanted to do.
And so I think.
But if you went to more dogs, they had to make it bigger.
They have, they have permission to. I'm not certain whether they will. They just have the, the pre, the pre-clearance issue.
Built in capacity, right?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Herr. That's, that's true.
Like dog lofts, you know, and they'll have up and down.
Mr. Barnes, it's not on here, but I'm just going to ask, is there, are there any AC 44 updates that we should know about? I know we got the transportation chapter well in advance, which is great.
Fantastic. And I was getting ready to actually mention under new business, Carolyn sent you out another agenda. We're going to try and work more in these two months, look ahead agendas for you all.
Schedule?
The schedule, yeah. And just please note that those are very much subject to change. Like if you look at the one right now, June doesn't have very much on it. I'm sure we'll be adding a couple of things to that as we move forward. But, yeah, we, we've moved from May 13th, when we were going to do the cultural resources chapter, that's been moved to the 27th to sort of accommodate some of your all's schedules. And that will be the end of the 10 chapters. Actually, we're dropping it down to nine potentially. I guess I'm thinking cat out of the bag here that the idea of the, uh, community resiliency chapter, I think as it's been read by, by other folks looking at that chapter, it's kind of a disjointed chapter.
Like the principles that flow throughout the entire plan.
Yeah. And so maybe I think we're now, we're going to go back the other way, as opposed to having that chapter like that, pushing some of those other elements back into the, there'll be nine, now nine chapters. So Morticum, we'll talk to you in depth about that on the 27th. But anyhow, that brings us to the end of the, the chapters.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but transportation is next.
Yes, sir.
And then
we'll be on the 27th, you'll have community resources and then this discussion I've tried to talk about with the, um, community resilience chapter being reformatted.
Thank you.
On the 27th.
May 6th, transportation. May 27th, community facilities and the, yes, historical. All right, well, yes, ma'am. We're calling it community resources now, so. That will be there along with that reformat at community resources.
Just get a new table of contents.
It's a work in art moving forward.
We keep track of all these chapters and what the heck are they're called now.
That was great new business. Is there any other new business?
So actually, I actually had a question. So there were some, some notable changes that happened before, some of these things came before the board supervisors and some discussions that occurred that we didn't get to participate in. There's discussions about transfer development rights and, and development area swaps.
Yeah, there was a lot of the development area shape and size that were new things within the board that we got emails about. We hadn't had that. Like they went farther and we didn't get to talk about it.
And I was just wondering, will we get, when will we get the opportunity to have those discussions ourselves?
So, sort of the basic structure of this is we're bringing stuff for you all to vet. You're making a recommendation to the board. And then the board takes your recommendation and, and adds other things to it as part of their workflow. You will, when we finish out these chapters, we will come back and bring you the entire conference plan for your review in its tot, in its totality. So some of those changes that you're talking about, as, as they make it into the, to the comp plan, you'll see that when we get towards the, the end of the process and public hearing. At, well, we have a work session first and then a public hearing. But as far as bringing back to the, to the planning commission, or the discussions about the changes to the boundaries that were sort of discussed at the board, you will, we will be bringing back to you. Remember, there's three major sections of the ordinances of a conference plan. There's the introductory one. There's a section on the growth management policy that will have sorts, not only will it mention about the growth management policy, but it will also have elements about criteria for expansion of the, the growth management or the development areas. So you'll be able to see that, but as far as like sort of the, some of those discussions, those items that sort of came up. Please understand, you know, as your recommendations go to the board, they, they can do with it what's their prerogative.
All right. Great. Any old business? Items for follow-up? All right, I will adjourn the planning commission to our Tuesday, May 6th date. And it is a work session, but it starts at 6 o'clock, right?
Yes, we're going to start that at 6.
Okay, great. We're adjourned. Thank you.